Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish your quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Would you please read our statement?
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 14th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of pervanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda/off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during the Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these public open forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda/off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their right to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written public comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please rise and join Supervisor Desmond in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flyer of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right. Again, welcome to today's Board meeting. Again, I just want to remind anyone who wishes to address the Board is certainly welcome to do so. We do have a two-minute limit on speaker time, and that's in place so that anyone who wishes to address the Board has that opportunity to do so. And of course, you do have the opportunity to address the Board. That's on any matter that is not on our posted agenda. And with that, we will go to our first item.
Our first item is public comments related to matters not posted on the agenda. We do have several speakers signed up this morning. Our first speaker is Richard Otterstad.
I bring to you our county representatives, two specific concerns this morning. The first, concerning elections from last year November 5. The Governor Gavin Newsom had ordered that no voter ID should be required for voting. Although this opened the door for many illegal non-citizens to vote and elect our representatives, which violates both our US and California constitutions requiring citizenship, this local Board of Supervisors, as lesser magistrates, did not oppose the Governor in his unconstitutional order that compromised our election's integrity, our representative government of we, the people, that had elected you, and furthermore allowed our county's certification of an invalid election. Now, when you knowingly failed to uphold your oath of office, to uphold the US Constitution as the highest law of the land, you should realize there are serious penalties, fines, and even prison terms that when this is investigated, validated, and justice is served. Should realize that. My second concern and request this morning is that you, as our county representatives as lesser magistrates, defy and nullify or not enforce the Governor's unlawful, unconstitutional sanctuary state proclamation for our county. You represent us, not illegals. This group of New California members has already previously cited to you the severe federal penalties, judgments for knowingly harboring illegals. You know this, and I'm sure you're aware of the current ongoing federal investigations into both our prior election issues and the current harboring of illegals. So please, take heed and repent of serving illegals instead of us, the lawful citizens of Sacramento County. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Bevins.
Hello, County Board. My name is Michael Bevins. I'm, just found out, I'm in District 1 of the county. I'm here to talk today about a coming, I don't know, storm, but a vote that's coming your way regarding, as you probably already know, the Sacramento City voted to have a design bridge proposal to cross the American River, called the Trucksville River, Trucksville Bridge. The design has cars included on the design. I believe, if I'm understanding it right, that through the Sacramento County, over the American River, there's a protection, a rule of that no infrastructure to be going through the American River, Discovery Park, should be anything beyond active transportation and transit. So this coming storm that's already started is coming your way. You're gonna have to vote whether to amend that gate to allow cars to come on with bridges to be allowed with cars, or to just uphold what the current law is and say, no, you can't come across with this design. You must go back to the joint board and design a bridge that does meet our criteria with either no cars on the bridge, or, not my option, but a respectable option is, don't build anything at all. Let's just improve what we do already have. We have cars that do cross the American River on both sides. We do have light rail that crosses the American River currently. The plan for light rail is to go to the airport. You can easily do that by going over the American River existing and then make a sharp left turn, go to Trucksville, and continue on. Same with the American River Bridge. We're adding capacity for cars, but we're also adding a bike lane. We can do the same for crossing this river. So when the vote finally does come to you, please uphold what's currently in law, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perry Ferrucci.
Good morning, Sacramento County Supervisors. I come before you today to talk about the proposed Cal Exit bid for California secession. The Supreme Court has consistently held that secession is not a constitutional right. In Texas versus White, 1869, after the Civil War, the court ruled that secession is not a constitutional right and that the union is perpetual. The court stated the Constitution looks to an indestructible union composed of indestructible states. This proposed measure could also be considered an insurrection and could be made under 18 U.S. Code 2383, which states, "Whoever incites, sets on foot, assists, or engages in any rebellion or insurrection against the authority of the United States or the laws thereof, or gives aid or comfort thereto, shall be imprisoned not more than 10 years and fined up to $250,000 or both, and shall be incapable of holding any office under the United States." Now, today what I'm doing is I'm giving you two additional documents in terms of what I said here. One is from Kim Fang, CBS San Francisco, about the new Cal Exit, and also the Legislative Analysis Office letter to Honorable Rob Bonta about it. So I'll leave copies up here for your perusal. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Mattson.
So I'm gonna use, thank you. Good morning. I'm gonna use our overhead. So you may remember, two weeks ago, I came and made a proposal regarding Sailor Bar, and I want to give a praise report. Thank you, county supervisors, particularly District 3 Supervisor Desmond. But I think this addresses everybody in the district. That particular week, there were many, I would have to say, outcries from the public regarding that Sailor Bar opened a road to automobiles. And just announced on March 6th, it has been paused. Regional Parks, so is it that the residents spoke and we were listened to? I praise and hope and pray that that is the case, and the hierarchy of how the county runs is important. A question that, so I just want to thank you. That's why I'm here today. So, thank you very much. The question I had regarding that was the announcement from the Regional Parks say they're going to review not only the community and their concerns, but also to improve the ADA access in a plan. So I just want to keep encouraging that we use the funding that was provided. I have asked that question several times about the funding, and it hasn't been able to be answered. So I just want to share this new entity that's happening in California. It's New California's DOGE. And what this is, it's, New California has been conducting their own investigations for years about the misuse of funds, and it's now gonna be official. There's this website, you're all gonna get a copy of this flyer with a QR code. I encourage you, what you see, if it's inappropriate, please report it. It's the doctrine of the lesser magistrate that you do so. So I pray that you follow through. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless you. And, thank you. And for our supervisors.
If you can just give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes Trenell.
If you could turn on the projector, that'd be nice. My name's Wes Trenell, and I came here about a year and a half ago. Oh, wrong place. I could easily do that. Year and a half ago, I came here and expressed my dismay on how long it was taking to repair Sacramento Bar. The water went bad, the water system went bad, and the park just spiraled out of control. Trees died, there were stumps, there were all kinds of issues. Those pictures do not even show how bad the park got before it bounced. So today, basically, year and a half later, this is the way Sacramento Bar looks, and it is an American River Parkway Park, not far from Sailor Bar. This weekend, I was down there, and on a non-rafting weekend, there were already 40 cars in the parking lot. It was very, very nice to see. Couple birthday parties going on. Late last year, the park was rented out several times in its entirety for various events like weddings and such. And so I just really wanted to come down here and say thank you very much to the commissioners who've listened to me and my concerns. Director Bellis and her staff, they're really quite amazing. Really appreciate them. I've been going to their meetings regularly. I was there when the Sailor Bar thing went down. It wasn't very pretty. I thank you to the 50 people who were involved in repairing the park. And that doesn't include the contractors. It took a lot of people to repair this park. And finally, I'd like to thank especially Adrian Guerrero, who basically had to dig up the entire park to fix the, he had to dig up the entire irrigation system to repair it. He repaired the park benches, they put in new barbecues. The man did an amazing job, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Todd Pfeffer.
There is a sergeant detective who retired from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office in 2013, who has been acting in a threatening and assaultive manner. On April 11th, 2024, he exited his vehicle and threatened me with physical violence while I was legally in a crosswalk. I phoned 911 and reported the assault to the Folsom Police Department. On August 17th, he made a threatening gesture at my wife and me as he drove past us. I phoned non-emergency and reported this to Folsom Police. On October 8th, he ran a red light and drove within inches of hitting me with his vehicle while I was legally in a crosswalk. I phoned non-emergency and reported this to FPD. On October 20th, he ran a red light and drove within inches of hitting me yet again with his vehicle while I was legally in a crosswalk. I phoned 911 and reported this to FPD, the assault to FPD. The retired sergeant detective admitted to running the red light and entering the crosswalk while pedestrians, my wife and I, were present. All four of these unlawful actions were recorded on the city's closed caption television camera. On November 1st, I observed the sergeant detective driving on my street, and when he noticed me looking at him, made a quick U-turn and sped away in the opposite direction. I contacted Internal Affairs, Office of the Inspector General, District Attorney's Office, and Office of the Undersheriff. None of Lieutenant Janey Galavich, Kevin Gardner, Tin Ho, or UnderSheriff Mike Ziegler, respectively, ever contacted me to learn more about these incidents. However, Assistant Chief Deputy DA Andy Solomon and two investigators came to my home uninvited just to tell me the sergeant detective would not be charged with a crime. Moreover, the sergeant detective has yet to receive a traffic citation for numerous violations of the California Vehicle Code. Is the sergeant detective who has lived with his wife one-half mile from the Folsom Police Department for more than 26 years receiving what the public knows to be professional courtesy? The governing body of Folsom, to which County Supervisor and Vice Chair Rosario Rodriguez was a member, was fully aware of these assaults. Law-abiding, tax-paying citizens shouldn't have to fear for their safety when walking in the county while getting exercise and enjoying the outdoors.
Thank you.
Ryan Harris.
So today, I changed my mind since we have the union director in here. They said that they were fighting for this, so I'm gonna bring before you a question that I'm sure is on both of our minds. How is your deputy director, who was an acting director at the time, able to send an email, a heinous email at that, saying things such as, I'm 51-50, involuntarily hospitalized, tried to escape hospitalization? It gets more ludicrous than that. Anyway, he lied multiple times, over and over, 10 times on me in one email alone, but when I provide you with this lie, when I provided proof that he lied to him and to you all, excluding you, Ms. Rodriguez, he fired me and you guys promoted him. I want to give you guys, I was rushing through that to give you guys as much time to answer Common practice to allow that to happen? Again, how was your, you might not have heard it, I was rushing. How is your deputy director, who was an acting director, able to send emails about me saying things such as, I'm 51-50, involuntarily hospitalized, tried to escape hospitalization, provided you guys with proof that that was lies, him with proof, he fired me, you promoted him? Maybe you guys could look into it, and I could ask next time? Tried to meet with you guys, still denied me meeting with you, so I'm asking here? Nothing? No? All right. Well, thank you.
And the final speaker, Davi Rodriguez.
Several months ago, I came before this Board when this Board hired Shelley Willis to shepherd the arts contracts for the new airport extensions, and I warned that she seemed to be violating the state contractor's license law. Now, since then, I have been in contact with the Board, and they kind of agreed with me, but nevertheless, here we are today. Ms. Willis has shepherded three contracts through that were just signed recently, and four artists who are not licensed contractors again. She has a habit of doing this. Now, I want to remind that state contractor's license law is an actual crime when you violate it. It's not something that's just frowned upon. They go out every month, the Board does, and conduct stings every single month, and they put people in handcuffs for doing this precise same thing. Artists enjoy no exemption from this, not a bit. And recently, the Board issued this warning, and they sent it to several thousand bid awarding agencies in the state. I don't understand what the hang-up here. I said last time that these art contracts seem to scramble the propriety portion of the brains of public bureaucrats and politicians. They go on all over the place, and I'm out there telling them each time that I can find them. But I have nonetheless printed up one of these for each one of you for the Board. I've also highlighted the portion of the law that applies here. I point out that not only can they cite the contractors, but they can cite the public officials who issue these contracts. They're liable for fines. And these contracts that are forwarded, they can be voided because they're illegal.
Thank you.
So I call on the Board right now to put an item on the next available agenda to review these contracts and void them.
Thank you.
These are for you.
That is all of our public comments for off-agenda items this morning.
Okay.
If you would like, we can take our Boards and Commissions nominations at this time.
Let's do that. However, I don't have my vote sheet, so hopefully my staff, oh, I do have my vote sheet. Okay. Let's do that.
Okay. So we are continuing to March the 25th, Adult and Aging Commission, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Children's Coalition, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Public Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to April 8th, 2025, is the God Honor Cemetery District, that's for District 5, North Island's Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to April 22nd is the Assessment Appeals Board, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, and Sacramento County Mental Health Board. This morning, we will start with our nominations for the Art and Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond, District 3 has three nominations.
Please continue to April 8th.
Thank you. And for the Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Desmond, you have two.
Please continue to April 22nd.
And Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to April 22nd.
Thank you. For County Service Area 4B, Slough Health Wilton, Kasumnas. Supervisor Rodriguez, you have one.
Please continue to April 22nd.
And Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to April 8th.
Thank you. Riolinda Elverdo Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Rodriguez, you have four nominations.
Please nominate Tanya Silva and waive the process.
Second.
Okay. And please nominate Hickey Roy and waive the process.
Second.
Thank you.
And then please continue the remaining vacancies to the March 25th meeting.
Thank you. The Sacramento Environmental Commission, Chair Serna, there is one county of Sacramento appointment.
Chiefs are recommending the nomination of Megan Reckert.
Thank you. And lastly, Supervisor Rodriguez, you have one position for the Sylvan Cemetery District.
Please nominate Tanya Wagner and waive the process.
Second.
Thank you. Are you seeing that up there?
Yeah, you need to clear it.
Oh. There you go.
Nope.
Nope.
I might need help from our staff on this one because I'm clearing. Let's do this.
There we go.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. And next, if it pleases the Board, we'll take our own ranks appointments as well.
Sure.
And this morning, we are looking for a nomination, an appointment to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council for an alternate member.
Any interest from my colleagues? Supervisor Hume seems to be interested, so I would nominate Supervisor Hume.
And that does pass unanimously. Thank you. So our next timed item is at 10:15.
Is that the only one that we have for own ranks?
That is the only one for own ranks today.
Okay, I was.
What about item 31?
Yeah, Supervisor, I believe that, the previous item, I think you were looking for, not GSAC, but you were looking for the Sacramento Regional Transit.
Right.
Not GSAC.
That's why I'm confused.
I am so sorry.
As was I. But we'll note Supervisor Hume. The Lord give it and the Lord take it away, I swear. Such a cathartic morning already.
I think we should nominate him to a fictitious.
Yeah, hey, put me on all the alternates, install the fictitious boards.
My apologies.
I would like to nominate Vice Chair Rodriguez to be an alternate to the Sacramento Regional Transit District.
Second.
And that does pass unanimously. My apologies for that.
Thank you.
That concludes our meetings.
That concludes.
All right. So we still have 12 minutes?
12 minutes, that's correct.
Okay, well, then we will stand in recess for those 12 minutes. Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish your quorum?
Certainly. Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is item number two, Capitol Air Show, California Capitol Air Show Impact Report and 2025 Preview.
The crew that makes it all happen.
This is the airshow tribe.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to look back a little bit as to what the nonprofit California Capitol Air Show has been up to and what's just ahead of us. My name is Darcy Brewer. I have served as the executive director for this organization for a couple of years, and with me today is our fearless Director of Operations, Angela Terry, and two of our Board members, Felipe Fuentes, who is your appointee to the Air Show Board, and Stephen Clark, who has no choice to serve on the Air Show Board with the Department of Airports, and Cindy lets him hang out with us. So, thank you, Cindy, for everything. Felipe?
Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you again for your confidence in reappointing me to the airshow board. It is a passion of mine, it is something that I grew up wanting to participate in, and to be able to realize that on your behalf or the county is a tremendous honor, so thank you for that. Let me tell you a little bit about all of the successes that we're enjoying at the airshow. Highlights for last July's show, we had over, just under 90,000 attendees enjoying this show for an unforgettable weekend featuring the U.S. Air Force Thunderbirds, the Italian Jet Team Frecci Tricolore, try saying that, and other world-class performers. The airshow featured the highly anticipated return of the night show, and in July, that makes a lot of sense. It was a fantastic show with fireworks, pyrotechnics, and a 1,000-foot wall of fire. It was all okay for the airfield, it was fine. And breathtaking aerial performances. The airshow was the first U.S. stop for Frecci Tricolore's North American tour in over 30 years, and it happened here in Sacramento, and the only place in the western United States to see the full team's performance. The economic impact, the important piece here for you all in your duty to the county residents, is that the airshow generated over $7.1 million in economic benefit to the region, drawing visitors from across the state. And equally important, our partners in hospitality, more than 500 local businesses, including hotels, restaurants, event vendors, experience increased revenue from the airshow visitors. And local business partners, including some of the region's largest employers, sponsor our event, so it was fun for everybody and very productive from an economic perspective. And the last statistic that is really amazing, 27,749 individual glasses of lemonade were sold at the airshow.
Nice.
Community engagement, over 200 acres of exhibits, aircraft displays, including partnerships with Travis Air Force Base, Beal Air Force Base, the California Air National Guard, law enforcement, and of course, other sister STEM organizations. And of course, we had a special pop-up museum honoring NATO's 75th anniversary, the 80th anniversary of D-Day, and the 100th anniversary of the Royal Canadian Air Force. We had more than 1,000 volunteers making the event to success, and we can't wait to talk to you about this year's show.
Very good. Thank you.
So, we went from July, and we're welcoming Blue Angel Number Seven one week from today. So we are very excited to switch it up again. Going into March 22nd, 23rd, we'll be welcoming back the United States Navy Blue Angels to Sacramento for the first time since 2019. To say that we are excited would be an understatement. The blue and gold jets are what people really attribute airshows to. If you ask somebody what a jet demonstration is, they would tell you it's the Blue Angels. They rarely know any other airplane. So we're excited to have them back into Sacramento. They're very excited. This will be their second show of the season. They open up airshow season this weekend in El Centro, so we're excited to have them back. With that, we, you know, the Blue Angels are a large piece of it, but we have a very large, fun weekend ahead. We're going back to that traditional show, nine to five, 12 to four flying. I can tell you 12 to four will be jam-packed with flying, with only military partners, but civilian partners. I will say this year, we are honoring the 80th anniversary of the end of World War II, and we are doing it really big. I think Mr. Serna would be really excited. We have a robust...
Not that I'm like that old, but...
Definitely not that.
You are the senior member of the board.
But I definitely know you love vintage aircraft, and we have a very large gaggle of warbirds joining us, not only in the air, but also on the ground, and some of these warbirds are priceless. They are not seen, they're one of one, that our wonderful friends have been able to bring out to the show. So it'll be a great time next weekend. With that, I think Felipe had mentioned to it, our show is not just about flying. Commonly, someone thinks about an airshow and they just think about the airplanes in the air. We are really proud of what happens on the ground. We have a massive event space, a massive festival, as you could say, of things to do on the ground. Our friends from Travis will have all of their heavies on the ground for you to climb through and meet the service members. We'll have U-2s and T-38s on the ground, UPS on the ground, but that's not all. We have a massive recruiting footprint. The Navy will have a national asset out there to learn all things Navy. That's not just an airplane, right? There's lots of other jobs. And then we have a huge STEM and aviation area for kids to get excited about aviation, but also to learn other aspects hands-on on the field for free. So it's a great family, eight hours. It's definitely worth everybody's chance to come out, and we hope to see you guys there next weekend.
Great. Number seven, was, is that Lieutenant Commander Lunchbox?
That is actually, no, it is Goldie.
Gotcha, okay.
He actually is a Marine, and so he is very much ready to come tear up the airspace.
All right, very good.
Lunchbox is number eight, and for the record, I did ask for an aircraft carrier because Mather can't fit in. We did the drawings. And so I think it's really important, and you know, the excitement that we talk about of next weekend is really important, but the mission of the California Capital Air Show extends far beyond the glitz and glamour of a weekend. And for the hard-working team on staff, as well as the board of directors, it's much more than just a weekend event. And so really, in the last couple of moments that we have in front of you, just want to talk about what that impact is and what that really means for us. And since its inception, and really of late, the California Capital Air Show, what it has done for this community has had over $600,000 with the scholarships to more than 276 students in this community. Those students are now attending 36 colleges across 14 states, and recently, we've added vocational training and career certificate training as well. Those are jobs that are being created in STEM fields that are not just pilots, right? So again, we focus a lot on what's in the sky on the weekends, but it's so much more than that. Not everybody wants to be a pilot. Some of them want to go on to be scientists, some of them want to go and become, I don't know, airport people, they want to go on and do other things like that. So we provide those opportunities. Most importantly, though, in the last year, more than 3,000 students in this region were engaged in programs, not just in one weekend. It's a year-round program. Additionally, the California Capital Air Show offers free programs, educational outreach programs, that go into underserved youth in our region, in your districts, right? So these are students that are getting exposed to aviation and STEM careers via hands-on workshops, mentorship from industry professionals, you know, getting an opportunity to actually physically get, see what it looks like, and touch aviation and STEM opportunities that they would never get an opportunity to do. Two of those examples that many of you have actually seen in person are the Destination Aviation and ACE Academy. You know, those are programs that are held in the summer, an opportunity to bring those students out to the airport, to Mather, an opportunity to see those and look at those pathways for them, show them what that future looks like, and provide immersive experience. You know, a couple of those things, and you know, I just think a little bit, we had them in the hangar, and we were providing, I think we had like drone experiences, we had flight simulation out there, and you could see these young students going around each one of these experiences and just lighting up and getting an opportunity that they would never get. Normally, it's be at home, maybe they were, you know, playing a video game, probably playing Fortnite like my kid or whatever. You know, it's just a unique opportunity that is only possible because of what the California Capital Air Show can do all year long, not just over the weekend of the airshow. But again, not just youth events as well, but supporting those nonprofits, schools. So we have more than 30 nonprofit partners that we have revenue share partnerships with, and that those partnerships total more than $80,000 annually. So when you're out there and you're seeing those folks that are taking care of the parking over the weekend, they're part of that revenue share program. So while they're working hard, they're making sure that they're actually getting a little bit back there, too. Additionally, the California Capital Air Show provides thousands of free tickets to Title I schools, youth groups, and veteran organizations, and obviously making sure that we integrate aviation and STEM-based curriculum into all of our programming throughout the year. So again, as we wrap up here, and I turn it back over to Darcy, the mission of the California Capital Air Show is all year long. It's, you know, the excitement of the weekend is exciting, and everything that we're going to see next weekend is incredible, and it's an award-winning airshow, but what we're doing is so much more than just that one weekend, and we thank you so much for that support.
Thank you, Stephen.
We're over our time, but I wanted to close with, without our, more than, an army of more than 1,000 volunteers, without your support, without the Department of Airports' funding and support, and all their team members that help us, and the city of Rancho Grande, and a list of about 100 other supporters, we wouldn't be in a position like we are today, where we're getting closer and closer to leaving no curious young mind outside the gates. So thank you for having us today, and thank you for always being so enthusiastic about what we're trying to accomplish with your airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darcy. I have Supervisor Desmond in the queue, but I'm going to say a few words here to start us off. First of all, I've had the opportunity now for several years to not just attend the airshow, which is always a great experience, but to really understand what goes on behind the scenes. So I'm really delighted that the four of you are here to kind of explain that, because the general public doesn't really understand that it takes 12 months to pull this off, and your board is to be commended, certainly all the volunteers that make the event such a great success. And Stephen, I'm really glad that you underscored the fact that it's not just a, an event that the whole region looks forward to every year, but it has this, I would say, even higher purpose, which is really providing resources for our young people to explore careers, and certainly to maybe learn about opportunities in the STEM world. And so it's just a fantastic, all-around part of what we do here in Sacramento County. And Cindy, thank you for, again, all the support that comes from our airport system. This is going to be interesting this year because we're, I think we're going back to the way it was, is that right? In terms of the date? So we're, you know, we typically, over the last few years, would look forward to the event in October? Is it September? So not only is it a different month this year, it's earlier in the calendar year, but then you have to really consider the fact that this particular event that we're coming up on in a couple of weeks here, they had to scramble and do that in short order this year. And so I'm sure that that took a heavy lift by everyone, but again, really look forward to seeing everyone out at the airshow. And again, thank you very much, this is part of our culture here in our region, and I always look forward to the presentation here in chambers to really give us and the public an opportunity to understand better what you do. So with that, we'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm sure you'll have several supervisors piling on here. Thank you for all your work. This is such, you know, I'm heartbroken, I'm going to be missing it this year, because it's really wonderful to go out there as a county supervisor with a little bit of swagger when you're at the airshow about, I mean, this is a signature event in Sacramento County, and we are all, everybody is so proud of it, and proud of you, and proud of the work you do, and proud of the work of all the hundreds of people that it takes to bring this together. And, you know, obviously, the support from Cindy and our airports is amazing. And I also love that this year, we're going to be taking advantage of the airshow to really work on some economic development opportunities, and this is going to be doing a, I'm looking up there, Crystal Beth Giger, Economic Development Director, to use it as an opportunity to network and say, look, let us highlight what we're doing in Sacramento County, and try to get people interested in doing more business in Sacramento County, whether that's a developer, a business owner, or an employer, to come locate here, because we have amazing things like the California Capital Air Show. Felipe, I will take issue with you highlighting all these features of last year's show. One thing you neglected to mention is the skydiving performance by then-Chair Supervisor Kennedy, which I hope will become a tradition, you know, going forward, you know, maybe...
Not by this chair.
But yes, thank you for all you do, and I'm so bummed to miss it. Darcy, I hate to even look you in the eye, I feel so horrible about it, but it's going to be wonderful, and it's because of the work that you do.
Thank you for those words. Supervisor Rodriguez?
Good morning. I spent 12 years working in Mather, and so on, when there was, when they would need coverage on Saturdays, on the weekends, when it was the airshow, I would always volunteer to work and watch it, and it was always fantastic. But when I went last year and I was there, that was a whole different experience. And so I hope that more people are, become aware of actually being there and watching the show and seeing some of the planes that you all bring into the area is, was really remarkable. And as a native San Franciscan, I'm a big fan of the Blue Angels. They are incredibly fantastic.
Fleet Week, right?
Right, yeah, Fleet Week. And so I'm excited to see the Blue Angels here in this Sacramento region. And so, and thank you for all your hard work. I know that a lot goes on behind the scenes, so I appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. You know, Darcy, I think I've told you that because of my personal history with my dad being a fighter pilot that died in the line of duty, I had a bitter aversion to airshows until I got this position, and now that I've gone back to them, I realized how foolish I had been for so many years, because it's just such a wonderful event, and it's the spectacle of what happens in the sky, it's the patriotism that you witness on the ground, and it's just the exposure to so many amazing people doing amazing things. So thank you for what you do, and I'm going to just work my way down the line. And I will say, even despite that personal history, and we have an item on today's agenda recognizing the 250th anniversary of the Navy, and so I don't want to disrespect my friends from the Navy or my colleague that just gave the Blue Angels praise, but obviously, I think of the Thunderbirds when I think of air performance shows. And Stephen, you're right, the work that's done throughout the year, and the way that the airshow exists really is a fundraiser to fund the programs that open up young minds to the possibilities in aviation, in STEM careers, in artificial intelligence, I mean, the caliber of speakers that you bring together to engage them in their curiosity is truly fantastic. And then the last thing I'll say is, Felipe, in addition to your duties as a board member, and counting the lemonade glasses, if there's a cancellation with the announcer, you could certainly fill in in that role as well. You have a great tone to your voice.
Very good. Again, thank you so much for being here and giving the brief presentation on what I'm sure will be just a terrific, terrific event, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is our consent calendar, items number three through 28. I do have clerk notes on two of the items. Item number three is authorization to appoint Joseph Angelo as Director of Personnel Services. We have some comments on that, as well as public comment. And item number seven, which is to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 16.80, 16.81, 16.83, 16.84, 16.85, 16.87, 16.91, 16.100, 16.150, 16.152, 16.155, and 16.160 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the timing of collection of development impact fees. This item, waifull reading, and was continued from the meeting of February the 25th.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, does any member of the board want to pull an item for separate vote, or discussion, or comment? I see Supervisor Hume in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I don't wish to pull the item, but I did have questions on item number 10.
Item number 10 is contract number 81299, Michigan Bar Road Bridge Replacement Over the Kasumnas River, approved the Fifth Amendment to an agreement with Duberry for professional engineering services in the amount of $49,430.
Thank you. And while Stephen's coming to the podium there, I know that this is just an amendment to the contract, and it seems like the previous four amendments have all been extensions of the contract, and so I'm just curious how much work has been completed to date, and how far into this pathway we are currently.
Steve White, Department of Transportation, Chair Serna, members of the board. We're pretty far along. We've been at this for over 10 years. We've got type selection is complete. We were here, I don't know the exact date, but we have Sequa clearance for the bridge as well. As you know, it's going to be a challenging right-of-way acquisition with the property owner there. He owns both sides of the bridge, has an active ranching operation, but we're about three-quarters of a million dollars into it already.
Okay. Okay, I'll have some other questions, but I'll take them offline. I just wanted to make sure that this, we weren't just incurring costs just from extending the contract, that there's actually work being performed as well.
No, no, and actually, this amendment speaks to, Central Valley Flood Protection Board is actually claiming jurisdiction now, which was not the case when the contract was initially let, so it's really to get through that permitting effort is what this amendment is covering.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to address the board on consent matters?
Yes, that's correct. For item number three, that's the authorization to appoint Joseph Angelo as Director of Personnel Services, as well as staff com- Services as well as staff comments as well from our county executive.
But members of the public?
Members of the public, yes. We have Ted Samira.
Good morning, Supervisors. I hope you afford me a little bit more than the two minutes as I'm up here to speak on behalf of the 3,600 county employees and which United Public Employees represents. First, I want to start off with some good before I get into the concerns. I met with Supervisor Rosario Rodriguez, and I appreciate that time. It sounds very positive. And I know in meeting with the other supervisors, we all share the same concerns on safety of the workers and the working conditions and environment, so I appreciate that and I look forward to meeting with you more on that. Also, with the hiring of the new DCFAS Director, Shalvi Bastian, I met with her, it was a two-hour meeting, which was only scheduled for 30 minutes. And so, I appreciate it with David and Siobhan and your selection that sounds very positive on what she's going to bring to DCFAS and her putting workers first, which I haven't heard in probably the 25 years I've been with United Public Employees in Sacramento County. So, I was here in front of you all a couple of years ago when you appointed Sylvester Fadell to the Director of DPS. I had some concerns then, and not with Sylvester, I've gotten to know him, he's a very nice fellow. And I appreciate all he's tried to do within that department, as I expressed, and I'm glad you have many of the department, I guess, heads or directors here within DPS so they can hear it straight from me. But nothing has changed in the Department of Personnel Services from when we last spoke. It's the same old same. What we should not be lost on us here is that our members go to DPS for hope in a county where there's little hope to hold on to. Hope that their issue will be taken serious and be concerned, not turned against them when they file the complaint of discrimination or harassment. I can go on and on, and I won't because I know you've got a full agenda here, and I want to respect your time, but something has to give. We're in contract negotiations right now with the Walferdin supervisor borrowing unit, which is close to 2,000 of your employees. Those are the social workers and the eligibility workers, the hisses over in Department of Human Assistance. Your biggest bargaining unit next to the Sheriff's Department. And the working conditions there, they speak on daily. I mean, we talked about the walk-in homes, you wanted tangibles, I brought members. Is that what I need here? Does it bring members to talk about those tangibles I brought to you all in regards to their experiences that they've had with Department of Personnel Services? Still today, to this day, our members are being denied. This is one. They get denied if their great-grandmother passes away because it's not in the contract. The great-grandmother. It's not till we have to make phone calls to get that rectified. We've got folks that are being denied pregnancy leave because our contract says something different than their policy, but their policy allows it. Well, for Christ's sakes, allow it then within your policy.
Ted, can you conclude, please? I've already given you an extra minute here.
So, something has to give here, Supervisor Serna. All right, we can classification studies, I've got one going out since 2019 for FSDs or CDSs. Two minutes for 3,800, we appreciate that.
Okay. Does that conclude our public speakers?
That does conclude our public speakers.
Okay. Mr. CEO, did you want us to go ahead and take a vote, and then you can have a few comments?
I would love for you to take the vote first before I thank you for taking the votes.
All right. Okay, if there's no further questions or comments from board members, and we've exhausted a list of speakers that wish to address the board on our consent calendar, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the items three through 28 on the consent.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with the members present.
Great.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna, and thank you to the board for the action on item number three. As was pointed out earlier, item number three was to appoint a new Director of Personnel Services. You're appointing Joseph Joe Angelo as a new director. Just a little bit of background about Joe before he comes up here and says a couple of words. He's had at least 13 years of executive-level experience in the human resources area. He's currently the Chief People Officer and Culture Officer at Best Friends Animal Society, which is an organization that spans 47 states. He also has had some local experience. He was the Director of Personnel Services for not only Alameda County, but prior to that, within the city of San Jose, and then prior to that, within the city of San Antonio. His education is quite impressive, too. He has a bachelor's degree from the University of Pennsylvania, a master's degree in Business Administration from the University of Miami, and a master's in Public Administration from Harvard University. So, we're fortunate to have Joe join the county, and I'm incredibly excited to bring on his enthusiasm and spirit and all his energy that he brings with him to the job. Lastly, I would just like to thank Joseph Shea. He's held this position for almost a year now, I believe, as interim, and he's done a fantastic job with his leadership and dedication to Sacramento County and Director of Personnel Services. So, with that, I'd like to invite Joe up and to say a couple of words.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, honorable members of the board. Thank you for the support and vote today. I greatly appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank David Villanueva, Sylvester Fadell, for the opportunity to work in this incredible organization, and to the incredible DPS employees, some of whom I've met today, and some of the department heads. I can't wait to get to know everyone and make it a better day for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
And Supervisors, as a last note, Sylvester Fadell will be making time on your calendar for you guys to have one-on-ones with Joe.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
Item number 29 is to approve the 2025 Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Traffic Plans.
All right. Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the board. Thank you for your time today. This is my, I'm a longtime listener, but first-time speaker. My name is Bobby Sidhu, and I work in the Department of Transportation in the Traffic Engineering Section. Today, I'm here to give a short presentation and request the board to consider the approval of the recommended 2025 NTMP traffic plan for L. Reichenway and U Street, and for the board to direct DOT to proceed with the implementation of this project. Now, let's take a little step back. So, NTMP stands for Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This started back in 2006, almost 20 years ago. This program was initiated to assess the speeding issues occurring on residential and minor streets within the county. NTMP offers a variety of traffic calming devices such as speed bumps, speed tables, or advisory speed signs based on the individual characteristics of the street. Now, a little bit of background on this project, on May 21st, 2024, the board approved funding for 20 projects, or 20 streets. Traffic plans were designed for these 20 projects, and public outreach was completed to seek neighborhood consensus. I'll go over a little bit of the overview of the NTMP guidelines. So, projects that have a support rate less than 65% are not qualified for further consideration. Projects with a support rate between 65% and 75% require a board hearing for traffic plan approval, which is why I'm here today. Projects with a support rate 75% or greater may be constructed without further board action unless a request for a board hearing has been filed with the Department of Transportation. So, the current project status, so of the 20 projects, 18 projects had greater than 75% support rate, meeting the minimum threshold of 50% responses. The other two projects received between the 65% and 75% support rate. These include L. Reichenway in District 3 and U Street, which is in District 4. In order to move forward with this project, the board would need to approve these two projects. L. Reichenway is between Los Molinas Way and La Sierra Drive, which met 62% for the response rate and a support rate of 72%, so right below that threshold. And U Street is between 24th Street and 28th Street, which also met the response rate of 63%, but it was at 69%, so right between the 65 and 75 threshold. Now, let's start off with the traffic plan for L. Reichenway, which consisted of reaching out to 29 properties along this segment. The traffic plan proposes one speed bump in addition with corresponding warning signs based on the geometric constraints and the evaluation of this street. There's an always-stop, Ellos Molinas, and there's stop control at La Sierra. So, we ended up with one speed bump with the associated warning signs. Now, on to the traffic plan for U Street. This consisted of reaching out to 41 properties along this segment. This traffic plan proposes three speed tables with the addition of corresponding warning signs based on the geometric layout. This location is adjacent to the Cherry Island Soccer Complex on the north side. DOT recommends the approval of L. Reichenway traffic plan and to direct staff to proceed with this implementation, in addition with the approval of the U Street traffic plan and to direct staff to proceed with implementation. I'm joined here today with the project manager of the NTMP and my supervisors. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Good job for the first time, by the way.
Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
Thank you. I believe our public speakers.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
We do have several members of the public signed up to speak. The first is Michael Brujanowski.
Appreciate you guys sharing us. I'm glad that you reviewed this plan. I think that the only thing I would ask is that maybe they could look at the first speed bump that was near the curve, if they can move it a little bit more. And the only reason I'm asking that is because we have a bike trail entrance right there on the curve. We use that a lot. We really appreciate the nice footbridge you guys put in there for us. But when they come down 24th Street and they come into that curve, it makes it very dangerous to have your child because you have to walk on the edge of the street right there. They come around and it's a blind curve, and it's really hard to get in and out of the foot trail. Plus, that trail has a lot of people that ride their bikes, and they come out and enter the road and have to travel on the road. And we have a lot of joggers, and it really makes it nice, and I'm glad to see a lot of that in there. And yeah, if you could just take a look at maybe that one bump a little bit closer to the curve, I'd really appreciate that. And I thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
And you guys have a wonderful day.
You do. Thank you.
Next speaker is Roger and Judy Brown.
Morning.
I live right there at the curve, and the bike trail is across the street from me, and I own that property in the county, it's got a bike trail through it. But anyway, we have speeders that comes around off of 24th, and they try, every time we try to go out, go walk with the pedestrians and stuff, we almost get hit. And my mother lives down the way where the first table they have set up, and she's almost 80 years old, and she almost got hit. The other day, there was some guy, he seen turkeys and stuff in the road, and he says he wants to speed up and hit it and take off. And I just want to see if you can add on another speed bump in front of my house, right there at the curve. Because I asked the transportation manager, I called him, "Is there a code about putting a speed bump by the curve?" And he says, "No, there's not." And I said, "Well, can you put a speed bump on front of my house by the curve and extend the signs and add more speed bumps on the other side of the curve?" Because my other neighbor, he's right at the curve, and it's hard for him to get out of his driveway, same as me. And then, I just want to see if you add more and continue with the speed bumps, please, because there is a lot of pedestrians. Thank you. And my wife is here to add some stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I did just want to add pretty much the same as what he had said. It is a big deal with that entrance and exit to the Dry Creek Parkway Trail right there because, you know, it is a lot of equestrians in there and kids on bikes and hikers and people, and we've seen it, we live directly across the street from the entrance, so we see a lot of cars fly through there. At the end of 24th there, they've got it blocked off. Well, there's businesses down there, and those people live there, and that is a racetrack. They go from there, and they go around that curve and shoot down U Street. It's all just a big racetrack. And then, if you look also across from where they're talking about putting those speed bumps, is the soccer park. And that's, those two big squares is 12 soccer fields right there. And so, I mean, it would be beneficial to them also. And then, also because we do have coyotes, we have deer now, you know, we have the turkeys. In our lot alone, we'll have five to 25 wild turkeys in our yard at a time, in our pasture, which is right there on that curve. And that's why we see them getting hit all the time. And we rarely see any highway patrol or county police up there. The only thing we ever see is rangers, and we love them, we're appreciative to them because without them, we don't know what we'd do. So, there's just no authority out there, except the rangers, to even keep track of that. And there are documented deaths on that curve. Many. And that's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Hunt.
Hi, I'm Sharon Hunt. I just want to say that there's been many animals run over, people don't care, and I just look for people next time being run over. So, we really need some help out there. That's all I can say, is we need the speeders to be stopped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Fisher.
Thank you for hearing us today. I want to start off by thanking the Sacramento County, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, the Sacramento County Parks District, the Parks Rangers for remedying a decades-long issue with the soccer complex parking that we had on U Street there for a long time. It used to completely shut down that road for nearly the entire day on Saturday and Sunday. Anyway, I am here to express my concern and strong objection to the county's proposal to install speed bumps on U Street. I live on 24th Street, which is only accessible by driving down U Street due to the road closures. The road is closed at Q Street, so the only way to enter is through U Street. As a resident directly impacted by this plan, I believe this measure is both unnecessary and misguided. There's multiple factors that contribute to the increased traffic and excessive speed, most of which can be resolved by proper zoning enforcement. The most five, or I'm sorry, the five common zoning infractions that you'll find on U Street and 24th Street is the, there's commercial businesses with employees reporting to work being run out of residentially-zoned parcels. Sorry, I'm a little anxious. Commercial vehicles driving on residential roads due to those businesses are being stored on residential parcels. Recreational vehicles are being used as short-term rental properties on some of these parcels, and recreational vehicles are being inhabited by long-term tenants without temporary use or any other type of construction permitting. There are also frequent use of recreational, I'm sorry, recreational, there is frequent recreational use of off-road vehicles driving up and down 24th and U Street. These vehicles are not registered or licensed to be operated on the roads of California or Sacramento County. These factors, these factors generate These factors, these factors generate substantial traffic as employees are coming and going from work. This plan only achieved a 69% approval rating, which means I'm not the only dissenting party to this plan. And so, in light of these factors, I respectfully urge the board to please look into enforcing these code violations, which would drastically improve the traffic and the people driving in excess speed on these roads. I'm sorry for going over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Craig Williams.
Board Chair, yeah, thank you very much. And yeah, I'm here representing my family. It lives on Elricon Drive, and just wanted to strongly commend staff for all the effort they've put into the plan here. And I've definitely seen lots of speed on Elricon, and as a consequence, had sent my children, we live on a corner of Elricon, Aurora Grande, and sent my children to learn how to use Aurora Grande instead of Elricon. It's such a horrific speed trap. But just wanted to ask respectfully if staff could consider an additional speed bump closer to Aurora Grande. Just the topography of the area is such that the grade is actually strongest on the west side, and so much of the speed occurs for eastbound traffic headed towards La Sierra. So I think just the way the plan was developed, I think the speed bump was just set right in the middle between the two stop signs, but I would like to know if there was a speed survey that was done and if that informed the position of the structure and to consider a second speed bump that would actually mitigate some of those concerns from the grade there on the west side. So that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our public speakers.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask if staff, maybe, Bobby, you thought you were maybe done. Oh, okay, Lupe's coming up to handle this one. Can you just respond to the request about the additional speed table or speed bump on Elricon, Lupe?
Yes, so Lupe Rodriguez, Department of Transportation. So in response to the Elricon item, that location, as the resident mentioned, is about 1,000-foot segment between two controlled stops, two intersections that have controls, always-stop controls, or have control stops. And so, when we look at placement of devices, we look at certain spacing in order to reduce the speed. One of the things that we tried to do is try to balance the needs of emergency services providers and also reducing the speed. So for that reason, we try to space devices between 500, 600 feet apart typically, so that we don't impact the emergency services providers significantly, because we know that they also have to come into the neighborhoods and attend to emergencies. And so, for that reason, we space them to that distance. You know, I think like with all of these kind of efforts, we work closely with the residents, and if we need to or can make any adjustments to them, we sometimes do. And so, we could take a closer look at that. But typically, what I'm saying is that that's the standards that we use, but we'll work closely with the residents to see if there's any changes that we could make to it. But typically, when these smaller segments, it's pretty tight, and that's kind of what we keep to.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Lupe. And would you just please, you know, maybe make contact with Mr. Williams about this?
Yeah, we could do that.
Before we get to Supervisor Rodriguez, Lupe, I want to understand something. The speed tables that we deploy, are they typically constructed with some cutaways for some of those emergency vehicles to get through?
So there's three types of devices that we install. We install the speed bumps, then we install the speed tables, and then, as you mentioned, is what we call the speed bumps that have the gaps. The ones with the gaps, we really only install in locations that are primary fire routes, because of the same issue with trying to find that right balance. Because when the primary fire routes, we want to delay them the least. I think the problem with those devices that we've had through the years is that when you start designing the gaps so that the fire engines and the ambulances are able to get through without going over them, the size of that design is really similar to the size of any other vehicle, SUV. And so, now what happens is the frustration is there, because now you install the speed bump, and just normal residents are actually straddling it also, which creates additional frustration. So we try to limit the ones that, those types, because of that reason.
Good to know. Thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Good morning, Lupe. I just want to say that I appreciate the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And there are, I think California is in a position where people are just speeding and in a hurry to get to where they need to and not stopping at stop signs and sometimes blatantly running red lights. So as I read this, I had some questions about, there are areas of our county that have like just serious issues. You can tell it is, you know, especially when it's near a school. So the one concern I had about is how projects are escalated for assessment of speed bumps. And I'm always cautious, because most residents want a speed bump in or close to their area, because it does calm traffic down. But there, so, and my concern is, there are areas where it is apparent that we do need a speed bump, but how these projects come escalated through was the area that I just had a concern. So it was through residential, through residents that submit requests or concerns or complaints about a street?
There's different ways. I think one of the ways is when, you know, people submit 3-1-1 requests, either traffic safety concerns or just want an evaluation from our traffic engineering staff to go out there and evaluate it, right? And so, sometimes it's a speeding request, sometimes it's a safety thing. So they come in different ways, and when we evaluate it, we sometimes say, hey, the right option for this street is our NTMP program. And so, then we describe to them the way to apply for the program. And I think the big part of this program is it's resident-driven, right? We need residents to want the devices on the street, and so, we ask for a petition of at least 10 residents on the street. And the reason we ask for that is because sometimes in some locations, speed bumps are controversial. Some people think that the speed bumps might reduce the property values and other things. So we want to show that there's some support before moving forward with our process. And so, that's why the reason for the petition.
So the, I guess for me, it's to really communicate to the residents, because, you know, I go to community meetings, and I hear, you know, I hear quite a bit about, oh, there's, you know, this is an area that we have constant speeders, and then I'll go drive it, and it's apparent that there are issues there. So it's really residents submitting their requests through 3-1-1, and once you see a trend, you guys go check it out.
Yes, we'll coordinate directly with the residents, the requesters, to kind of inform them of the process and kind of give them ideas of what we could do. Sometimes it's NTMP program, but sometimes it could be some changing of striping or even some additional signs. So there's different things. You know, the investigation will bring out what could be a benefit to the residents on those streets.
Got it. Okay. I just look at it as more as, are there areas of the county that could use, you know, more attention? But when people submit complaints, I get if you want to look at those, but I just think there are other areas of the county that could use some, you know, speed calming. But, thank you.
Yeah, because as you go out to meetings, and if there's residents, you could just, you know, send them over to us, and we could contact folks directly and ask them and inform them of the process, and we could work with them on it.
Thank you, Lupe.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Lupe. Thanks again to the residents who took time out of their schedules to be here and certainly informed the decision. At this point, I'd look to my colleagues. We do need to approve this and direct staff, so is there a motion?
I'll move, item number 29.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 30 is adhering to determine whether to modify definition of Sacramento area for the purpose of applying the prevailing wage provisions, prevailing rate provisions of County Charter, Section 63.
Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the board. I'm Joseph Shea, Interim Personal Services Director. A brief presentation for you this morning. Per County Charter and ordinance, in every odd number of years, the county is to conduct a hearing to define the Sacramento area for purpose of applying the prevailing wage provisions of the County Charter. The data collected this year suggests there be no changes made to the definition of Sacramento area. This has been consistent since the ordinance went into effect in 1979. There have been no changes. The findings must be considered at a public hearing to be scheduled no earlier than March 1st and no later than March 31st. Notice of the hearing was published twice in the Sacramento Bee this month, as well as we have noticed the recognized employee organizations regarding the hearing. Therefore, I respectfully request that you open the hearing, take any testimony, and approve the resolution. This concludes my report, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, seeing none, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
All right, very good. In that event, I would look for a motion.
Chair, if you could just open and close the public hearing officially, please.
Open the public hearing. Seeing no speakers, close the public hearing. Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our business.
That concludes our business. We have County Executive comments.
Very good. We do have closed session, second-floor conference room. So with that, we are adjourned. Did you have a comment?
I do have one.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. Supervisors, thank you for today. I'm glad we're done a little early today. You know, there's certain dates in our calendar that are special to some people and to others, too. We have March 14th, which is Pie Day, which people enjoy, not only the circumference of a circle, but also eating pie itself. Then we also have May 4th, which is, for those of you who are Star Wars fans, it's May the 4th be with you, and some of us celebrate that day stronger than others. But today is actually March 11th, or 3-1-1. So today, we talked a little bit about 3-1-1, and so, we thought today would be a great day to kind of highlight some of the things happening in 3-1-1. This is the 11th year that we've had 3-1-1 here in the county. We've, and as you know, this is, 3-1-1 is created for non-emergency use, for the unincorporated area. You can actually dial 3-1-1. You can also email, and we also have a mobile app. In 2024, County 3-1-1 took almost 200,000 calls, 11,000 emails, and a variety of other requests of about 40,000 contacts. They've closed about 237 calls and dispatched about 36,000 requests to various county departments for immediate attention. So I just want to express my appreciation for the team, the 3-1-1 team over in D-Tech, and thank them for their contribution to this program. Also, just so you know, there's an open house today between 9:00 and 2:00, I believe, and you're all welcome to take a tour of the 3-1-1 center if you'd like to go by and stop by. I think there's some refreshments over there. So with that, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, David. Any comments from board members?
I have two requests. The first one is, I would like to request that the County Executive look into creating an ordinance regarding electric bikes and scooters for children so that law enforcement and the public are clear of what is allowed and what is not allowed for children to use.
Yes, Supervisor Rodriguez, we'll look into that.
And the second one, I would like to request that the County Executive look into bringing back an ordinance, making camping on private property illegal, similar to what Rancho Cordova has passed in 2024.
Okay, we'll look into that also.
Okay, and I just have some acknowledgements. Sorry, hold on here.
Are you adjournments?
No. They're just, they're public.
Yep.
Okay. The first one, I would like to recognize the Costa Roble High School basketball team for winning the San Joaquin Section Division Four Championship, and following it up with their first playoff win in nearly 60 years. I'm excited to congratulate Lillette and Stephen Freeman, Rio Linda Entrepreneurs and Chamber members, on winning the Downtown Sacramento Partnerships Calling All Dreamers competition for 2025. Their business, Pitafore Coffee, stood out among a competitive field of applicants, earning them the opportunity to expand into Old Sacramento waterfront this summer with their new Pitafore Brews Coffee and Tea location. And I would like to recognize Kay Hermanson for receiving the Community Champion Award in recognition of her outstanding dedication to the city of Folsom. Kay has worked tirelessly to support the Adopt a Trail program, helping recruit volunteers and sponsors to many nearly 60 miles of trails with over 30 segments now adopted. That's it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none. Now, we are adjourned.